I'm recording.
Good morning, everyone. We're just going to give folks a few minutes to get pulled into the webinar.
And we're ready to go, Karen.
Okay, fantastic. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. My name is Karen Fassal. I'm the President of the MRC Board of Directors, and we welcome you to this latest in our series of Town Hall Sessions to help keep our members informed. We have all the members of the board here with us today. Those names and contact info is always available on the MRC website. We also have our Executive Director, Mike Carroll, and our Legal Counsel, John Pottle, who's with Eaton Peabody, as well as MRC's Technical Consultant, George Aronson of Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation. Today, we're going to go through a series of slides, give you some updates on where we are, and talk a little bit about communications that we've had with you. Jess, you can move it forward to the next slide. And talk about the idea of member participation. But to get started, I know, I'm sure all of you are aware that there's a formal sale process underway for the Hand to Waste Processing Facility. But this time, the difference with the sale effort compared to others that have occurred over the last two years is that there is now a defined end date, and most importantly, that the facility will indeed be sold this time, if not to a qualified bidder who provides a higher and better offer than to the MRC for just over $1 million. Our Executive Director, Mike Carroll, is going to talk in more detail about the sale process and the timeline, as well as MRC's roles that will play in the process, which are important. We're also going to talk about the implication should MRC end up the owner of the plant, the most significant issue being, right off the bat, securing financing we feel is needed to be successful in the endeavor. And this is where member participation comes in, and we'll discuss what that might look like and the benefits of participation. We'll wrap up with a question and answer period where folks can type or speak, questions and comments. And although we won't be addressing questions until the end, please feel free to type them into the Q and A feature at any time during the presentation. So with that, we'll get started. Mike's going to kick us off and sort of talk about the schedule and the sale process. Mike? You're muted there, Mike.
Thank you, Karen. In my part of the presentation, I will take you through a few slides and review where we are in the handed facility sale process today and the timeline moving forward. March and April have been very busy for the MRC. The receiver was hired by the trustee and appointed by the court in mid-March. Receiver access has a liaison to the bondholders and a go-between slash moderator for all of the parties involved. Shortly after being appointed, the receiver hired an investment banker. The investment banker will market the handed facility and solicitate qualified bidders for the receiver. MRC has spent much time with the investment banker over the last several weeks, getting him up to speed on the history and the operations of the handed facility. The investment banker has a data room all up and going, and once potential bidders sign an NBN A, they are granted access to the data room. The data room is full of documents for bidders to review on the technical and financial aspects of the facility's operation. Most of the MRC's communication goes through the investment banker at this point. Many tours of the handled facility have taken place in the last three weeks, and in some cases, multiple tours to the same potential buyer. Also, in March and April, MRC's legal team completed the documents required for the stalking horse bid and the bidder qualification application. We are now just waiting on the bondholders to final sign off, and those documents will get signed and filed with the court over the next week or so. By May 16, preliminary bidder qualifications are due with agreement markups, if applicable. This is more or less an application that determines if a bidder is qualified to bid. We will go over that in more detail in the next slide. From May 17 to May 27, MRC will still receive and screen bidder qualification documents, review any requests, go back and forth with bidders, asking questions, and perform due diligence. June 3, now that the due diligence and qualifications have been reviewed, the receiver will announce which buyers have qualified to bid. On June 7, the selected buyers' bids are due. This will be their actual cash offers. On June 14, investment banker will hold the auction of selected buyers for the highest price. In other words, lower bidders at this point can bid in specific increments to open the highest bid until no one bids any longer. On June 30 or prior, a closing will take place to complete the sale of the handed facility. Next slide, please, Jess. Screening bidders on financial capability. Some of the things we are looking for, but are not limited to, bidders must have proof of cash on hand, ready to close on or before June 30. Proof of finances or means to finances available to them for facility upgrades and startup. No changes to MRC's current tip fee structure or pledge of MRC to sell them the land. Present MRC with a high-level performer. MRC will review all information in bidder qualification forms for financial capability. We will conduct due diligence and have back and forth with the potential buyers. Once a full review has been completed and all questions answered to satisfactory, it will then be decided if the bidder, if the buyer is deemed qualified to move forward and submit a bid. Next slide, please, Jess. Screening bidders for technical capability. Bidders will need to show MRC their experience level with operating a material recovery facility, known as a MRF, experience with pulp production and marketing of commodities. If they don't have the background or lack experience in some areas, then what does, then what does their plan look like? Such as, will they be bringing in an operator? We will also have a new owner or operator submit a startup and operation plan as part of the qualifications, which will include, but not be limited to, company or chart, staff plan and timeline, diversion plan. Once again, MRC will do a deep dive in due diligence in these areas of technical capabilities to determine if the buyer is qualified to bid. Next slide, please, Jess. We end up with a new private owner. Come June 30, it will look like this moving forward. Finalize key agreements such as the masterway supply and the lease agreement with MRC. Negotiate any potential new roles MRC could play in the relationship with the new owner and the handed facility before June 30. Bondholders' financial closing on the facility purchase on June 30 or prior. Add owner to permits and licensing after closing. Owner mobilizes that facility for upgrades, startup, and ramp up. MSW hits the tipping floor by late 2022 or early 2023. That's all I have at this time on the current sale process and where things stand. Thank you for listening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Actually, one thing before you step off. Could you give a sense of approximately how many people we feel are participating in the process, at least at this point, before any documents are due?
So the investment banker has reached out to, I know, well over 20 parties. Parties that have come back with interest and talking more in signing NDNA's is there's definitely over eight of them right now.
Great. Thank you. So while there is a lot of interest, and we do feel like, as Mike indicated, there are a number of parties that have had multiple tours of the facility, which obviously is a very good sign, and have shown a very high level of interest. We're still unsure whether this process, working with private sector partner, parties, is going to be successful. I think we feel like there's a pretty good likelihood that there will end up being a private sector buyer of the plant. But in the end, MRC does need to be prepared in case it does end up the owner. Next slide, Jesse. So if there are no bidders that are deemed financially and technically qualified, or in the unlikely case that no one that has been deemed qualified does end up bidding, MRC stalking horse bid will be accepted. So that bid was $1.5 million minus certain expenses. So the final cost is expected to be just a little over $1 million. MRC has the cash set aside to cover this purchase price. However, really, to successfully reopen the plant and cover operating costs until the plant reaches its profitability, MRC's needs significantly more funds. We estimate it will take on the order of $20 million to successfully reopen the plant fully. To secure that level of financing, we really have a choice, as is evidenced by the fork in the road. We could seek to raise and/or borrow the funding needed, or we could bring in a private sector partner that has access to that kind of funding. And there are pros and cons to both of those approaches. But in the end, MRC feels that, all things being equal, the approach that would best serve our members would be for the MRC to be the sole owner of the facility. Next, next slide, Jesse. So raising that $20 million needed to we need to get that $20 million. But as the sole owner, there are a number of benefits. First and foremost, the MRC and its members would have full control over the facility and its use. You know, in short, we would be the masters of our own destiny in that case, beholden to none. As a nonprofit operation, the long-term economics would be better for the facility and for our members, and together with the facility control and more funds available to reinvest in the operation as opposed to, you know, having to pay a return to shareholders. We'd have more flexibility to provide more and better services targeted to the needs of our members. For those reasons, we feel like this is the ideal approach, if we can make it work. So with that, really, the question is, where do we get the 20 million? Jesse, next slide, please. Um, you know, the ideal situation would be to have somebody magically provide those funds to us to be able to secure grants or earmarks. However, really, those have a long lead time and could not be secured within the timeframe needed. We could borrow the funds from a bank, but all financial institutions require sufficient collateral to secure those sorts of loans. In this case, because the facility itself does not have a value of $20 million, we would need some sort of loan guarantees to support those bank loans. And again, using state or federal guarantee programs. One has a long lead time, not guaranteed within the timeframe we can do, and also come with significant regulatory requirements. So really, to access funding, MRC is going to need support from its joining members. So, and many of you have probably seen the memo and the survey that we sent out back in the early part of the month, talking about this and sort of trying to get some information from our members as to willingness and ability to participate in something like this. There are really two different ways that a joining member could support the ownership of the plant. And I'd like to stress that all of this would be on a volunteer basis. This would not be mandatory and would not be expected of every member. But there are two different ways that a joining member could volunteer to support MRC's ownership and operation of the plant. One is to be a guarantor, which is essentially kind of being somebody who cosigns on a loan. You don't actually have to put up the cash, but in the end, if things don't work out, you would be responsible for repaying that loan. Or a joining member could be an investor in loan cash directly to the MRC. So that's kind of like the high-level approach to the options. And our Technical Consultant, George Aronson, who's worked very closely with Mike to develop sort of like the financial plan, should MRC own the plant, is going to talk more about these different options and what they might look like for a member and what the source of return might be to a member that does that. Because obviously, in exchange for the risks they'd be taking on, they would receive some benefit when the plant economics supported that. So with that, I will hand it over to George, who will go into detail about that.
Thank you, Karen. Can everyone hear me? Yes, okay, great, okay. Okay, so again, I'm George Aronson, consultant to the MRC. I know that there's been a lot of interest and a lot of questions about what would it look like if the MRC were to go raise the money and buy the facility? And we've done a lot of work on that option, and we have to walk a very careful line as we do presentations of what our thinking is. Because remember, we're doing this presentation simultaneously with an effort by an investment banker to raise bids from a whole set of private entities. And for a public entity to disclose information on what it thinks or in terms of economics, we want to be very careful not to be in a position where we're disclosing information that might affect that process one way or the other. On the other hand, we've gotten a lot of questions from members. We understand the need for transparency and understanding of what the concept is, what it's going to look like, what are we talking about, what are the risks, what's the compensation look like? So we're going to try to walk that line. I guess what we're going to see are some numbers that are considered preliminary, indicative. But early on, we understand that the numbers need to be refined. We understand that before we go out with a very specific request, which would be at the point where we know that or have a better sense of whether the MRC would likely to be the purchaser, then we're going to have to come back to our membership with a whole lot more detail. But that's going to be a different circumstance than we are now in terms of being, talking simultaneously with the process of bringing potential buyers in. So we're going to start the explanation, points that will be high level, and I hope you'll bear with us. This is one of those classic trade-offs that public agencies have to deal with. You try to be transparent, but you also can't release cost information in a lot of detail that undermines your own efforts or that has other implications for the process that we need to be careful. So that being said, you know, again, as Karen laid out there, how might the joining members be a guarantor? What does that mean? Well, if the MRC is going to bow some amount of money, or the number that we've been using, which is a round number, is $20 million. And part of that loan could be subject to be guaranteed or cosigned, and we're looking for entities that might step up to be the cosign. They need the ability to authorize and approve that guarantee on a timely basis. We know that some towns have, are either, either have charter or other requirements that might not let them do this. Other towns might need this, have a special town meeting, or maybe towns have other special processes to do this. But there needs to be a clear path for authorization and approval on a timed schedule that works for when the MRC might, sounds obvious. Every town has a different story on that. We understand that. We're looking at it as a guarantee, and typically, if you bought bond insurance, you'd be paying a percentage or you'd be, that is compensation, a percentage of the outstanding principal has a fee. So if the loan is, if you use a round number, $20 million, and that's the outstanding principal, and if one entity stepped up for the whole $20 million, 2% of that would be $400,000, and that would be that annual fee. So we put that into our financials. And that's the benefit. The cost is, if cash is not available from other sources, then the loan would have to be paid down, or loan payment might be made depending on circumstances. So that's the concept of what a guarantor is. Next slide. Jesse, can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Now, what does it mean for a joining member to be an investor? What we're learning is that towns have very interesting requirements. There are towns that actually can't sign up to be a guarantor, but might be better positioned to actually take out a loan themselves and loan the proceeds to the MRC. The MRC could get money from that source. Well, at one end, if the MRC can get the full $20 million from one entity, they wouldn't need a commercial loan or a bank loan. If the MRC got $10 million from entities and they wanted 10 more from a loan, then it would reduce the size of the loan by the amount they got from the member. So it's a possibility. It might happen. There are towns that might fall into this category and might do this. So what does it mean? Well, if the MRC is getting a loan from a commercial source, then you have the same term and repayment schedule to the loan that we got from the member. Treat them as, basically, the other loan is a measure of what the market is for the loan. Plus, you're also essentially, by providing it in that way, you're acting as a guarantor. So you get the guarantor adder, 2% of the of the outstanding balance. The other part of this that we recognize is when the MRC has multiple loans out there, and one of them is the equivalent of a bank loan or a commercial loan, and the other's coming from the member. We're going to have to establish an order of who gets paid in what order, who gets paid first, who gets, that's paid second. And we're going to ask the member loans to be subordinated to the bank loans. Another, the bank would have to, and they would probably demand this as a condition of giving the loan a superior position in terms of getting paid first. So these are just some of the complications that come up. But we have some principles to address them, and hopefully, by the end of this, it's clear and we understand. I guess the other part is that there's enough complexity here that we want to introduce the concepts in advance of actually making the ask, so we can get feedback and people have time to understand the concept. Next slide. Okay, so what's the compensation? And again, if you're an investor as a member and provide cash, then you get that cash paid back as if it were a loan at the market interest rate. Both an investor and a guarantor would get fee for the guarantee. And we realize that there has to be a ticker. So if there's cash below at the end of the waterfall, after the debt service is paid, then we provide a preferred return from the funds left after those payments have been made. And I think, so there are three sources of compensation. Payback alone, if the loan is provided, pay a fee for the guarantee, which is provided either for the loan or for a guarantor. And then everyone who's participated in that way would get a preferred return. Some of you, if you've been a while, may remember back in the 1990s when we had a structure with PERC, where we had a preferred return and schedule on. Maybe that's a bit of history, but the MRC has done this before. So we understand the waterfalls and how to set them up, and typically, how they work and how you need to administer them and the fact of considerations and putting them in there together. Next slide. Okay, sample numbers. Sample numbers. This is a sample. This is an early set of numbers, but we understand that a lot of people have been asking to see something, and sometimes the easiest thing to do is to go through some sample numbers and see how they work. Numbers here are in, are in thousands per year. So for example, if we have $12 million in tip fees, that's actually representing tip fees from all the MRC members. And if the MRC, if the facility is at full commercial operation for this full, first full year, the hope is there'd be some new ways coming in as well, either as part of the MRC or as, as commercial wasted a little higher tip. But, you know, we're looking at 12.4 million per year. Products recovered from that, from the incoming waste of 5.8 million. Total revenues of a little bit over 18 million in that first year. Okay. Not showing a lot of detail here, but we built this up internally. Let's just assume for the purpose of this discussion, an operating expense number of about $15 million. That includes all the labor for the facility and includes all the outside services, utilities, material supplies, and parts. If there's maintenance required, it also includes certain overhead management backup and back office costs, leaving ashroom operations of about $2.8 million for year one in this example. Okay, if, if debt service for that year is $1.793 million, and that's paid first, and that includes debt service both on the loan and perhaps the loans from municipalities that they go that route, that leaves, subtracting that from the 2.8, that leaves $1.038 million available. Next step in the waterfall, let's pay that guarantor. And again, if it's a $20 million loan, that's a round number. If it's a $20 million loan and we're paying 2%, 20 million times 2% is $400,000. Take that off the 1.038 million, you have available left 638,000 to distribute. Let's say there's a preferred return of 2.5% on that 20 million. Let's call that $500,000, and we can distribute that to each of the participants. And there's still a general distribution lap for the MRC other members at the end of the waterfall, which, depending on prices of products and inflation and costs and all that, it's going to change from year to year, hopefully go up over the life of the project as operations get more and more efficient, and we can add some money going forward. So there's some basic numbers again. You can see 1, 2, 3, a couple of sample years. These are sample numbers preliminary, but I do hope that they illustrate the thought process and what the compensation would come from in terms of a waterfall. Next slide, please. Okay, again, some sample preliminary compensation number. Guarantee fee. People have asked, well, what is it in dollars per ton? Well, it's going to depend on who participates and how many different towns participate. But real rough numbers, 20 million and 2% is $400,000 a year, 100,000 tons roughly rounded from the MRC. You divide 400,000 by 100,000, that's four bucks a ton if everybody's participating. We understand not everyone will participate. So who will and who won't, and how much, and what does that mean? Well, if half of the ton participates, then suddenly, it's $400,000 getting split up among 50,000 tons per year, and that's about eight bucks a ton. If 25% of the ton participates, that's $16 a ton. So again, I can't give you a number. I don't know if it's going to be four with everyone participating or 16 with 25% of the ton participating. And you see what the difference is in terms of the dollar per ton number. But hopefully, this gives a sense of what we're talking about in terms of compensation for participating. And also notice, if everyone participates, then each individual town would have less risk. If a smaller number of towns take on the full burden, then they have a larger risk. So it's appropriate that they would get a larger return in terms of dollars per ton. Similarly, for the investors, people have asked, well, what's my return on invested cash if I do that? I don't know what the interest rate is going to be, but there's 5.5%. It's a starting point, and that number seems to be changing a lot recently. We've put out 2% as a guarantee. Fee share, seven and a half. And then if there's a 2.5% return, that gets you to 10% total return in this particular example. Again, these numbers might change, and I know it's a lot of detail for some, but we've gotten enough questions on what is this going to look like? That we feel it's important, even in advance of going out with a specific offer, to let people see our thinking, our principles, our step-by-step, why we think this could work, and why we think municipalities might be interested in going down this route. Okay, so next slide, please. At this point, I'll turn it back to Karen Fassal to wrap up, and I hope this was helpful, at least in having some insight into what the MRC is thinking of in terms of going to municipalities regarding requests to be an investor or here. into what the MRC is thinking of in terms of going to municipalities uh regarding requests to be an investor or here.
Thanks, George. I'm I'm sure we'll have some more questions for you during the question and answer period. But um in terms of MRC's next steps, um, we will be working to refine that financing proposal and the compensation plans that George just outlined. You might have seen some brackets around some of those percentages. As George indicated, these are not final figures and it don't represent what the actual uh formal request would be. Uh, we're working to narrow in on that now, but um, one of the reasons I I know during our last town hall, we had talked about having the request, the formal request out to members um this month in April um regarding participation and financing. Um, but we realized that uh there's too much uncertainty. And we also needed to get a sense from our members sort of about um who might be participating at what level so that we could better build the um the financing proposal and the compensation proposed um proposal. And uh so we did the survey instead, um which uh turned out to be very useful. Um, and we did realize that there were more um complicating factors uh for members and more um, you know, unique circumstances in terms of time timelines and legislative process that we had originally anticipated. So that information was very useful for us and we realized that um for uh many of our members, if not most of our members, any effort to secure um participation and approval to participate in financing of the facility. Um, you know, will require quite a bit of work on their effort on their part um as well as on our part to make sure everybody's educated and has the information that they need to be able to make an educated decision about that. And uh we didn't want to undertake that um until we had a better sense whether or not MRC was going to end up being the owner of the facility. So with an understanding now what the timeline looks like for the sale process as Mike went over earlier, um, it's it's pretty clear that by mid to end, end of May, we will, we will know whether we have qualified bidders um for the facility. And um if not, then we know that MRC will end up being the owner. So um, we're waiting to for that process to unfold, to get to the point where we have actual written submissions from bidders and we can assess whether or not we feel like any of them are going to be qualified. Um, chances are if uh organization has gone through the effort to submit documentation to um, secure that they're technically and financially capable, that they will go through with the bidding process and would end up having a bid that exceeds one point five million dollars. Um, so only if we find out or or feel that there's a chance that MRC is going to end up being the owner of the plant, will we go down the path of going to our members to really request this. So um but in the meantime, in case that's in case that is, because we do need to be prepared, we're working to refine our proposal and put together the information that we would need to um back up that quest to our members. But in the meantime, in the month of May, we'll be working to review the proposals from bidders to assess their financial and technical ca- um capacity. Um, and working out terms with those qualified bidders to ensure that they meet the needs of MRC and its members and um all the terms of the purchase and sale agreement. But if the science indicate that we're likely to become the plan owner, we will move into another phase and we will actually um, submit a formal request for our members for financing assistance. And we would be going on the road to meet with our members and talk with councils and select boards um and whatever's needed to assist you all in making that kind of decision. Um, we would expect that that would be happening. Um, like I said, end of May, early June. So um, but in the meantime, we're working to put together the information that we think our members need. We're also very interested in in continuing to hear from our members. Um, as I mentioned, we had put out um a survey to our members. If there's anybody that hasn't responded to the survey yet, we're still interested in taking taking answers to that, responses to that. So you can get in touch with Mike Carroll if you have any questions about whether whether your community has uh responded to that survey and if not, how you can participate. Um, we're also interested in hearing from folks as to um what your thoughts are about MRC being the plan owner and um any questions that you might have or thoughts you might have about sort of that, the general concept of how you might participate and what that compensation proposal might look like. Um, now's the time to um let us know how you feel about that so that that can be taken into consideration as we prepare a formal request. So um, with that, uh, that kind of wraps up our comments. Um, and uh we'll move to the question and answer portion of the meeting. I want to appreciate everybody's time and um while we're waiting for folks to um type their questions into the question and answer feature, or you can also raise your hand if you'd like to speak a question. Um, I just wanted to let folks know that we do have our regularly quarterly board meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, April twenty seven. Uh, this will be an in-person held board meeting. It will also be accessible virtually. So if you prefer to dial in and and watch it on your computer or on your phone, you can do that. Um, I will also state that, as you can see on the slide there, um during that critical period from mid-May to the end of May, assuming we there are bids received from companies, MRC is going to be very active in reviewing that documentation. We anticipate that the board will be meeting multiple times over that period to consider um the proposals and work out details with regard to contractual modifications that might be needed on the part of the masterway supply agreement or the site lease and things like that. Um, and make sure that those are in keeping with what our members' needs are. So um, with that in mind, we will move to address some of the questions that have come in and please uh feel free to continue to put those in the um Q and A feature or raise your hand if you'd like to speak a question. So starting off, we have um a comment, uh, question. There are infrastructure investment and jobs act funds coming available as well as American Rescue Plan Act funds. Maybe those could be used as leverage with the state. Um, we agree with that statement. Um, and we have um met with many um state and federal representatives um in agencies to try to find out about those funds and how MRC might be able to access that. I I have to say we've been unsuccessful so far um in that endeavor. Um, so if anybody has any comments or thoughts about particular people that we might be able to hook up with, but I know that we've talked with the Department of Economic Community Development. We've talked with the Maine Bond Bank. We've talked with USDA Rural Development. Um, trying to think if there's some others, but we have really tried to make our rounds um to find out about the availability of those funds. Um, to to a certain extent, some of them, it's a timing issue in terms of um not being able to know with certainty that we'd have avail- access to funding like that um within the the timeframe we need, which is really in the next three to six months. Um, so um, but uh, but that is a good point. It does seem like there's a lot of money out there when we'd love to get some of it, even if it's not the full twenty million, any any bit would would be assistance. So anybody has any special um contacts they'd like to share, we'd be happy to hear about that. Um, another question is for due diligence and protecting the interests of its members. Is the MRC board seeking independent external review of its capacity to own and operate this facility? Um, well, we are not. Um, George would like to comment on that, though, so.
So just just a couple of things. I'm not sure if it was clear that the MRC as owner would be bringing in a contract operator to take on uh, the the responsibilities of hiring a workforce, actually putting procedures in place, the back office associated with that, all the HR uh self-health and safety, et cetera. So that uh we've talked to experienced this uh contract operators that own and operate MRCs and that have done it for other public entities. So we're, you know, very familiar that that's a lot of work the MRC has not done before directly, but other parties have. On the other hand, MRC does have a lot of experience with oversight of operating facilities. And so that's a better role as opposed to being the direct uh operator of of the facility. So that's, I guess that's one uh point. But in terms of external review to own and operate it, when the MRC goes for the loan, there will be a process of evaluating that loan uh that the lending institution uh will also be going through. And you can uh be sure that the lender in that case will be going through uh a a serious independent external review of the MRC's capacity to service any loan it might provide. So I think between uh the, I mean, the MRC side reaching out to contract operators and to others in the industry uh who frankly are their stakeholders in the facility. And uh from the lending side, there will be plenty of uh independent review before uh this scenario would come.
Thanks, George. Uh, what were total revenues from products when the plant was running? What percentage of revenues in this projection of the five point eight million are coming from sales for use as byproducts as fuel, for example, briquettes versus new products? George?
Okay, so the answer to that question, you need a key to the data room. And you need to sign a non-disclosure agreement. Uh, I, you know, of course, you're interested. We understand. And uh we appreciate that. I mean, this is why I gave in my introduction. Uh, the discussion of walking that fine line. We spent a long time working with the bondholders to get to this point. We're on the road to an auction process. We want to make sure that process is clean and respected and for uh for the MRC to reveal information that might be considered confidential is not something that we want to do at this point. Uh, that being said, uh, anybody can go on the internet in twenty twenty two and look at commodity prices now as opposed to uh what they were in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. The world is a different place in terms of pricing and price inflation. We understand that. Uh, certainly, if you look at prices of the uh major products, uh fiberite uh or cellulose pulp and fiber uh products, for example, or for that matter, uh, the prices of net of renewable, uh, natural gas, which would be generated out of the uh AD portion of the facility. Uh, you can come to your own conclusions based on not a lot of research and what prices have done between twenty twenty and twenty twenty two. Uh, so I know I didn't answer your question directly, but uh it's again part of walking this line as we go through this process. And if I can, Karen, if I can jump ahead, because I think the answer to the next question is is actually the same about the monthly operating expense of fiberite before its closure. Uh, the answer to that question requires a non-disclosure agreement, a key to the data room. And uh so the uh pro- proposals have that information as, you know, and it's also been factored into the MRC's own uh uh projections. I will say this, the biggest uh ongoing expense is going to be labor. We all know what's happened to labor costs in the last two years, and we've taken that into account. Uh, the MRC also has the advantage of having members uh who who are operate, who are operating uh solid waste facilities, have our workers or staff. And so we consulted with, in some cases, with with uh our members on what their labor costs have done in the last few years to get an idea uh how that ought to be reflected in our own projection. Sorry. And again, I know we didn't answer the question, but I hope we gave some sense that we looked into it to the extent and we can give information in public.
George, one thing I'd like to add to that is I think it's key also to remember, um, especially when it comes to operating and to the um commodities is just before the closure, um, the facility received their beneficial use permit. That's going to change um quite a bit of things when it comes to operations because you don't have the hauling of that material anymore. And then also you can now sell that material. So I think that's important to um add when uh doing the comparison.
That's good. Mike, thank you. Okay, another question. Have you vetted these assumptions with anyone else besides the staff, board and Mr. Aaronson, any outside unbiased party? Um, well, I will say that um the the figures that we're using are very much in line, I think, anyway, perhaps George or Mike can speak to this as well. Uh, with other proposals that we've seen throughout the last two years that have come in to look at the facility. Um, also, we had access and have access to all of um coastal's operating information, as Mike uh mentioned, and we know what has changed in the meantime uh in the favor of the facility. And then again, coming back down to all of the private sector proposals, of course, uh, from MRC's perspective, we don't have that profit motive or the profit need to be able to pull off the top level and provide payments to shareholders and whatnot. So that is working in our favor as well. Um, and I just would also like to say that I feel like uh the team that MRC has is second to none and no one knows this facility better than they do. Um, they have extreme depth, depth of experience and knowledge about this specific facility and about the waste industry in general. Um, and I have no qualms at all about the um recommendations and technical support that they're providing to us. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments about that or. George?
Okay, so this one I'll answer directly. Yes, I think that uh we've had direct discussions with contract operators and we've asked questions about their own experience in terms of, for example, labor and O and M costs at operating MRCs over the past few years. So uh in in terms of uh putting our own assumptions against uh assumptions or actual experience from operators, we have had some of those discussions. I think we've also uh had some contact with potential customers of the uh and off-takers of the material that the facility would produce. And so those have also yielded insights. There's nothing like talking to customer to have a nice discussion of what prices might be and what how revenues might go. So again, realizing being intentionally vague here, uh, given the delicate circumstances we're in in terms of disclosure. But yes, we have vetted these assumptions with uh in terms of both industry uh participants, we're familiar with cost of other facilities and with uh some of the potential off-takers.
Bob? I'd I'd like to add that the board of the MRC has had personal experience for quite a while, and especially during the last three years with both George and Mike. And we know how to ask questions as well. So I think we've looked pretty thoroughly at this and continue to do so. Uh, they deserve the support of their board. They have it. They're credible. They know what they're doing and we rely on them because we know we can.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, um, how long until the plant will reopen? How realistic is the proposed timeline? And Mike, maybe, and maybe some George?
Um, well, the new owner will go in and then they will go through ramp up. And they will have to turn the equipment because the equipment's been idle. And as after they get through the ramp up and staffing, um, they will need to be um testing the equipment and training. So they will need a minimal amount of waste on the floor to do that. And we would expect that would be close to the end of this year. And then sometimes within the new year, we would hope that they would be at at uh full operations until we sit with the new owner or with SaaS. Um, we won't know the exact timeline on that, but that's what we're we're figuring on right now.
Okay, so maybe George, you can provide our little, how realistic is this? As our resident.
I mean, we're not going to pretend there's no risk here. Uh, the other hand, we know that the facility was heated through the winter. We know that uh attention has been paid to some larger motors return uh so that on one hand, you know, the facility is idle. And uh on the other hand, we also are greeting about supply chain disruptions, about delays in getting certain types of equipment. And that can come into play as well. So is it, is the, is the proposed timeline realistic? Yes. Are there scenarios in which there there could be delays? Yes. I think, I don't know how much more than that we can put out there other than we're doing the best we can to manage the risks on behalf of uh of uh our members. And I think uh the uh private entities that tour the plant and are interested in bidding understand and they they'll seem to be coming back for more tours and information. So I think that uh, we'll know when we see who bids and what they look. Uh, and I think that's the answer to the next part of that question as well. The MRC is the bitter last resort in the event there are no other higher, better uh bids. Uh, we understand that and we're doing this to be prepared for that eventual. We understand that, and we're doing this to be prepared for that eventuality, understanding that the specific challenges to overcome.
Thanks, George. Yeah, so that's kind of the second part of this question. Does it make sense, any sense for MRC to own this plant? How will it range financing and reopen the plant? Will they have to sell it again? So, you know, are, we contend that it does make sense for MRC to own this. And, but at the same time, you know, we think there's a pretty good chance that another private party is going to come in and going to own it because it does make sense for somebody to own this plant. It's going to be profitable and they see that. You know, the big, you know, obstacle to get over is the, the financing needed for the restart and whether people can convince their, you know, boards and their financing assume that risk because as George said, and it's not risk free, but we're confident that it can be done. We know the plant better than any, any, any entity out there and feel confident that it can get started and be operated in the manner in which it was constructed. We have the wherewithal to do it, and we think we can make it profitable for our members. You know, will we have to sell it again? I mean, if we own it and we get the financing together, we're going to operate it and make it successful. So that's all I have to say about that, so. But so the next question is, are member communities able to schedule a tour of the facility before making an investor or guarantor commitment? Um, that's a good question. We hadn't thought about that, Mike, what do you think?
So I believe all we'd have to do is check with the receiver and the investment banker because they are kind of controlling that part of it while it's in their oversight. I know that they do ask the folks that tour to sign a waiver of liability of touring the facility. So I'm sure if I checked with them and the member is willing to sign that waiver, I don't think it would be an issue, but it would be their call.
I think it's a great idea, though, it makes a lot of sense for folks to want to see and learn more about it right up close, like that. All right, can you describe the anticipated or planned upgrades that were mentioned earlier? George or Mike?
George, you want me to take that, or?
Yeah, what you want, why don't you give it a shot?
We know that when we did the performance test, that there was some bottlenecks and a profit improvement plan. And a lot of those were on the, the, the wet end. It couldn't keep up with the material to make the pulp. So the profit improvement plan was put together by Fiber Right, and then independent engineers were brought in to review that plan. And then there was some minimal, minimal corrections that need to be made on the MRF. Oh, when we had lent Fiber Right the $1.5 million to their bridge loan that they were going to get to get them by until they got their loan from the bondholders, make those improvements. We had all the access to all that information. And so those are the improvements that still need to be made, and we know what those improvements are. Of course, there might be other things that need to happen as we turn the equipment back on and test it. But the most part of that would have been the profit, the original profit improvements that were needed back just before they, they closed.
Okay, yeah, Mike, I'm just going to add in that the process of giving tours to potentially interested parties has been very interesting in this respect, because when you have potential buyers walking through and it's interesting to see what they're looking at, what they've said, and sometimes you get different approaches. I think, I think the front end worked pretty well, and there were a couple of things to fix there, and, and those were identified. The backend, I think there's a little more work and there's perhaps, you know, a bit more of diversity of opinion. I wonder what the best way to go there is. But we now heard from a number of folks with long and deep expertise in pulp production on what might be done there. So I think that's the interesting. I should also say that there are a couple of what I'll call stage two and stage three or add-on projects. And Michael, you might want to add on to this, that, for example, the facility was making biogas, but had not yet installed the equipment to upgrade that biogas to pipeline quality, so it could be injected into the pipeline that crosses the site. In the last two years, that's become increasingly common in the United States. There's a lot of what they call RNG renewable natural gas projects where they're upgrading biogas out of an anaerobic dejector for up to we expect for pipeline quality. And that's practically, I won't say it's a commodity, but it's something that's been very common to do. So that's one of the upgrades that would be important for someone to do. And there are other technologies that have come down the road in the last two or three years that might be upgraded at the plant in various ways. And different vendors have indicated interest. Again, we're focusing on the original products that the plant would produce, cellulose pulp, preferably for use as pulp. But there are other, for example, new technologies for use of film, plastic film, or other things that have been suggested. And someone who comes in may bail themselves of those upgrades as well. So there are a number of options.
Thank you. Okay, let's see where we at here. For third-party bidders, they must have their preliminary bids, including all information pertaining to financial and technical capabilities submitted not later than May 16th. Is that correct? I would just modify that slightly by saying that I don't believe they actually have to have a bid in at that point. It's really, May 16th deadline is all about technical and financial capability. Their preliminary bid price is not due until I believe later that month, is that right, Mike?
I think that is correct, Karen, that is correct.
All right. What role will the technology provider Fiber Right have? Can any of this be achieved without the technology provider's participation? Who wants to take that?
That I can take that. That will be up to the owner, whether they want to bring Fiber Right in on a, has a consultant or has a technical advisor. While they're in the data room, they have the information there. I believe that they're able to, to contact them, so that would be up to the owner, whether they bring them in as, as part of this.
And I'll, I'll pipe in that Fiber Right is clearly interested in seeing the facility succeed, which is why a few of the representatives of Fiber Right are on this call.
Thank you. What about communities who have unfunded ARPA distributions? Those are the American Rescue Plan Act distributions. Could they put those funds up as small investor contributions? Hmm, actually, I don't know the answer to that. On the face of it, it would seem like you could, but I will say that the way that we're anticipating it being structured is that these would be loans to the MRC. You would not actually be investing the funds in the plant and becoming kind of like an owner yourself as a community. So I'm not sure whether that might have a distinction in the ARPA distribution guidelines. That would be something we need to look into a little bit more to find out about that. Because we'd be, you know, MRC would be repaying you back that loan. You'd get the loan proceeds plus a return on that investment, so. And the, the guideline for the revenue loss provision, which is you need to use funds for regular government services. I'm sure we'd have to, we'll have to do a little work on that. But that's a good, another good question. Okay, um, you have said that the MRC would require $20 million worth of financing. Does that apply to third-party bidders? Does a qualified bidder who had the highest level of funding necessarily win the auction? So I will say, and George is going to talk about this, but we've gotten a little bit of grief for using this $20 million figure out there as much as we have, because that is not, everybody gets to decide how much money they feel like is enough to make this project a success in terms of financing needed post-purchase price. And Mike can talk about the qualified bidder and who's going to win. But George, what would you like to say about that financing piece?
Yeah, just the 20 million is a round number, and so no, it doesn't apply to third-party bidders. It's, it's enough money that the MRC feels would be, you know, a prudent conservative number to borrow in order to undertake the task. There may be someone else with different plans, who has a different number in mind, and that's fine, as long as it all comes together, they can support it. And, and I think the other thing I can say is that in terms of a distinction between qualification and winning the auction, qualification means having enough money to do the plan that's been proposed. And that's what the MRC is going to look at, but the MRC is not going to pick the winner of the auction. That's something that is going to be handled by, you know, with the oversight of the receiver as to who's, you know, it's the, the highest bidder in the auction. That's not us to fix that.
Sophie, did you have something to add? And all I want to add to that, Karen, is our number, of course, is going to be much different because there's, it's, it's a totally different scenario. You know, we own the land that, that it sits on, we're a nonprofit. So whatever number we're looking at, we're going to have a much different structure than somebody else coming in and doing their own performer on this. So ours is going to be a lot more unique than, than somebody else. And when it comes to the qualified bidders, if they qualify and there's more than one, then the way I understand it is they will submit a bid. And then once those bids are accepted, they will be back and forth between the investment banker and those bidders in an auction process. And those bids will go up and there'll be a structured increment that they need to go up on. And it'll be awarded to the highest bidder after that, as long as it's, you know, and the only people that will be in that, that bidding round will be the, the people that qualify.
Thanks. Members want to know how much of their waste will be recycled versus burned? Well, when the plant is up and running again, none will be burned. And our hope is that upwards of 70 or 80% of it would be recycled or diverted from landfill. So that is what the plan is designed to do. The plan is not designed to burn waste at all at any stage in the process. Will the MRC disclose this information if it becomes the owner? George?
Yep, no, just facilities such as this one file with the main DEP, manual report, and all the information will be in there. So you have to show, the MRC will have to show that it's meeting the, the permit conditions in the solid waste license, or the new owner will, if it's not the MRC. And so all that information will be reported to the DEP, and I believe that public information will be.
Right, good point. Thank you for this presentation. What happens if the member communities can't raise the $20 million? Well, that's an excellent question. So the, you know, from, from my perspective, and I, and I believe your perspective, you know, it's very important that we, we undertake this effort, knowing that we can be successful. We've worked very hard to come up with a plan that we think will maximize the chance and the likelihood of success. And part of that is having adequate financing in the range of $20 million right off the bat. We feel like starting with less money puts the chance of success more at risk, only because we just recall back that one of the issues that led to the initial closure of the plant was undercapitalization, meaning lack of financing, lack of adequate financing to get it over the finish line. We do not want to make that same mistake. So that is why we feel very strongly that it's important to have sufficient amount of financing, much of it that will go towards working capital, making sure we have the cash flow needed to be able to take the action necessary to bring the plant to its profitable and regular operating, commercial operations. So if we can't raise the 20 million, we'll be working hard to find a way to do that, pretty much is all I can say. We'll be working both the state and federal angles, we'll be working private sector angles. You know, we just go back to the fact that there are lots and lots of people that are very interested in this plant. And I would like to also say that we have lots of support at the state and federal levels. We have many people who are watching this project, who are interested in seeing it succeed. They may not at this moment be able to come to us with cash available to help support it, but we know that they are supportive of it, they're keeping an eye on it. And so those are folks that we would be talking to again if we're not able to get to the 20 million that we need. So I don't know if anybody else would like to add to that, but we're committed to making this work because we do feel very strongly that this is the solution for a region in terms of waste management for the coming decades. Without this plant, all of our members and the whole region, region as a whole, will be in a very difficult position and will unfortunately see a lot of waste going into a landfill as a result of that and higher costs for our members and for others in this region. So we're committed to that. We think others out there and across the state of Maine and other entities would agree with that and will come together to make sure that the plant can continue. So if anybody else wants to speak to that, Sophie?
I guess the, the only perspective I would add to that, Karen, yes, to everything that you said. The unfortunate part is before MRC can do anything, we have to have right title or interest to the facility. And the second part is unfortunately, the state of Maine is not seeing the crisis that MRC sees. I know that MRC members have been working very, very hard to engage the state. And unfortunately, until there is a crisis, I don't think anybody is going to, to come forward. That's why you guys don't let me go to those meetings with state people because I am just so frustrated with them. But the other piece, I would just say, there was a question earlier about Fiber Right technology. And I do know that Fiber Right is on the call. But, you know, I want people to understand that when members bought into this plan, it was for that proprietary information and technology around the anaerobic system that allowed this to happen. And that technology and licensing does go with the plan. That is not something that has to be recreated.
Thanks, Sophie. Okay. Who decides the winning bidder? Is it MRC, the receiver, bondholders, or all of the above? So once it gets to the auction process, it is going to be the receiver and just flat out who offers the most money. There's going to be no other decision-making process. All of the decision-making happens on or before June 3rd. On June 3rd, the receiver is going to designate who is a qualified bidder. Once people are designated as a qualified bidder, that's it. At that point, it's just going to come down to flat out cash offers, as far as I can tell, Mike. And so any, it's the qualification process where MRC has a role, we have input, we can argue about whether or not we feel people are qualified. And the receiver and then, I guess, the investment banker, I don't know, I guess, maybe it's the receiver we'd be arguing with about qualifications. But after that process, after MRC has, has made its opinions known, then it's just cash. Okay, how, have any towns shown an interest in being a cosigner or investor? Yes, they have. We're pleased that we've seen some results from the survey, and there is, you know, broad support for the MRC and the concept of MRC owning the plant. As I mentioned, you know, a, a number of folks have indicated there's sort of, you know, quite a process with regard to getting approval to be able to participate in financing. There's also lots of questions about it. So we're hopeful that with more information and perhaps a timeline that better fits folks' needs that we'll be able to garner the, the support that we need to, to have members participate in that. But yes, there has been interest in it. And of course, we also know that kind of like a fundraising campaign, nobody really wants to give unless they know other people are giving. So as I indicated earlier, you know, we're not going to go out and see member participation in financing and then only get $5 million, let's say. And so then, you know, the, the rest of the money is sort of the rest of the money is sort of, we're not gonna take folks' money unless we know we can make it a successful endeavor. Let's just put it at that. So there will be sufficient participation to ensure that MRC's confidence has a high level of confidence in the success of the endeavor. So we will, you know, attempt to address these sorts of issues in the information that we're gonna be putting together for members, so that we can sort of, you know, answer these questions in front, and like I said, we'll be more than willing to go out and meet with your legislative bodies in your townspeople to provide the information that feels needed to be able to make these this important decision. Okay, will there be new permitting requirements from the state which may impact the opening? I will say no, but Mike, you can talk about that.
No, part of the qualifications is the plant reopens and operates as is. We understand that there might be some efficiency improvements and simple thoughts, but with working with D P, you know, we've been working closely with them during this whole process, and what will happen is the bidder will also qualify with the D P, and then they will be added on to the the permits as long as MRC stays on those permits also.
Great. Who are the potential off-takers, and do some of them burn the waste? George?
I'll just, you know, I I use the word off-taker, so I'll respond. I think if you look at the market for the products from the facility, I mean, the question here is really going to the cellulose pulp, and the highest investment use of cellulose pulp is as an input to a paper process. But that's who we're talking to. I think that, so our, you know, the intention would be to have the cellulose used in paper products and closing that loop as as recycling of the cellulose. That's where, you know, that was the basic premise behind the Fiber Right concept from day one, and that's still what we're looking at. Now the markets changed a little bit, but that's still the highest investment use of that product, and that's where you know, that's those are the proposals we're looking to see provided.
Thank you. You mentioned an asset purchase agreement. This process started in late February. What has taken so long? John?
It was March, I believe. I wanna say it was March, but but go ahead, John.
Yeah, you know, I'd say, you know, an asset purchase agreement has a fair amount of detail, together with all number of exhibits, and it's not just strictly the document itself. There are all the other aspects that have been discussed, you know, that we frankly have been talking about today in this town hall. In other words, a final sale process. So all those aspects have to come together in parallel, multiple parallel tracks. You know, it's April twentieth, you know, I would suggest that we frankly pulled it together quite quickly in in relative terms. And as Karen, you had mentioned before, and and previously meetings, you know, we've we've targeted, you know, June thirtieth as the ultimate closing date, so there are many, many things that have to come together to make that happen. We have done that to maintain that trajectory. So there's a lot that goes on in terms of doc prep, behind the scenes, getting all the court filings, et cetera, going. This is our sale through receivership, so there's there's added things that need to be done. So from my perspective, we have been responsive and on schedule, and we're still on the trajectory that we set forth in late February, early March.
Thanks, John. I'm gonna combine the next couple of questions together. Have there have there been any bid dates? And how many entities have shown interest recently in buying? Did we say eight?
So I, before the receiver and the best you started, several people were contacting us, and I provided that list to the receiver, the investment banker. All of those folks told me that they were gonna sign in the base and pursue looking at the project. So that's why I'm confident with that number. I know the investment banker reached out to well over twenty parties. How many of them have shown an interest in signing N D As? I'm not, I'm not sure. So that's that, that's where the answer of the eight is coming from. I have given several tours, and I know that the people that have been taking tours have also signed those N D As.
Sophie?
For clarification, nobody's bidding at this point. At this point, they're kicking the tires, they're looking at the potential investment, they're signing the N D A, and they get access to all of the confidential proprietary information. And then, if I'm remembering correctly, by May third, they have to submit their information, which then gets them qualified or not. At that point, we'd start to see bids, correct?
Yeah, and actually, it's May sixteenth is when that ability form is due. And just to be even more clear, technically, the bid documents are not even been released, because that is the asset purchase agreement, which is now finally gone through its final review and is, I believe, in signable form, but it has not been posted to the data room, I don't think. So until that's up, technically, there's no, if people can't bid, because they don't actually know what the, what all of the bid requirements are, so. You're right about that. All right. If MRC is the owner, will you bring Fiber Right into the operation?
Question that we'd have to have with the board and 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 just see where things are are at as the equipment turns and what the needs are.
Can members leave their joiners if the MRC takes over the plant? John, you wanna take that?
So my short answer would would be no. You know, what we've been doing all along is just as we have for decades for MRC and its all its members is is sticking together. And, you know, the joiner agreements all form the backbone of the masterway supply agreement, which is what makes the the plant on the front end in particular you know, financially viable. You know, the the sample financials that were discussed earlier in this town hall, you know, one of the fundamental basis is the tip fee revenues that all come from the masterway supply agreement. Again, the all supported by the joiner agreements. So, you know, we are looking to continue that relationship with the facility, you know, with M R, you know, essentially with MRC being the owner to help maintain and have the highest likelihood of success that we've been talking about.
Thanks, John. When the plant was in operation, a small camping-style propane canister shut the plant down. Has that issue been fixed?
Yes, I'll give a quick description. The reason for that issue is due to metal pricing. Coastal at that time tried bailing larger metals, and by bailing the larger metals, it created a spark. And that's where that propane tank ended up, because they had shut the magnet off, so that everything was going to bailer. So that was a lesson quickly learned, that they can't fail the larger metal metals and have to continue to recycle them through the the bulky recycle.
Thanks. The byproducts are burned, yes?
So I just want to clarify byproducts. I think what they're referring to is the residual, the twenty to thirty percent leftover after everything's been processed and gone to reuse items. So that is the, and if that's what they're asking, then that is the contract that waste management has. It's waste management holds the contract for those residuals, and those go down the crossroads if they're referring to the the residuals.
All right. What specifically would Ms. Wilson want the state to do? Would you like to respond to that, Ms. Wilson?
Or specifically, I think it would be a lot easier for the state to guarantee all or a portion of of the money that's needed to get this plant up and running. Specifically, I think once the plant is sold and ready to go, the state could help pave the way as opposed to being the impat- the impediment that it was when we were initially trying to get the plant up and running. Specifically, I think the state could come to the table and try to help us solve this as opposed to issuing platitudes and pats on the back. That is specifically what I think the state could do.
Thank you. Can't we just truck the cellulose straight to the mill in Old Town?
So like I had mentioned before, the beneficial use permit just came in prior to the plant closing. There still needs to be a few things we're working on with D P on that, but the opportunity to do off-take agreements locally at that time wasn't available. I don't even believe the mill was running pulp at that time, but definitely, if if we had ownership of this, we would look, especially with trucking costs where they are, we'd look at 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 the most, at local options first. But that's off-take agreements, and remember that that would have fallen under the beneficial use permit.
Tony?
We can truck it to Old Town only if they want it.
But our pulp is gonna be beautiful.
Yes, it is. But again, that that's something we're selling, and for whatever reason, they may not want it. We need willing buyers, which we will have, I guarantee, like, I'll guarantee it, I'll back that one up.
All right, well, that brings us to the end of the questions that are out there and actually pretty close to our desired ending time. So I know it's been a lot of information today. We really appreciate folks attention and interest in this issue. And as we said, we'll have much more information coming, particularly in about a month or so. We do have our regularly quarterly board meeting next Wednesday, and we start at nine AM with the finance committee meeting, which is open to the public, and then the regular meeting starts at ten AM. We'll be meeting in person at Orano Town Hall in their council chambers, or you can dial in by stream. I think we're doing Facebook and the MRC website, something like that. So with that, I think we will wrap it up. Please keep your eyes peeled for additional updates that we'll be sending out via Constant Contact. And if you have any comments or questions or thoughts or ideas or sources of funding, we'd love to hear about it. Mike is available all the time by phone or email. Feel free to reach out to him or to any of us on the board. Thank you. Is that anything else from anybody would like to add? All right. Thank you again. I hope you all have a great afternoon. Get out and enjoy the sunshine.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.